Call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Blunier.
Here.
Leach.
Here.
Layman.
Here.
Mendel.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no public hearings tonight, nor do we have any presentations and special reports. Anybody like to make a public comment? Consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes at the regular meeting, May 20th, 2019, and the approval of the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Second is the appointment of Nate Parrott as President of Potemp.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Second is the appointment of Nate Parrott as President of Potemp.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The other item I have is we've been requested that Class D liquor license regarding them that the larger drugstores would like to possibly sell wine and beer. So before you, you have an ordinance change. So if we could have a motion to discuss.
I'll move to approve the ordinance.
Okay.
Second.
I would ask the administration, Julie, to explain some of her thoughts on this.
Basically, we were contacted by one of the larger drugstores in town requesting to basically checking to see if we had ever changed our ordinance. They had requested this, I think it was five years ago, and it was not changed at that time. And in discussing it with the mayor, I said I don't see a difference between walking into Walmart or say Kroger and purchasing a bottle of wine or a 12-pack of beer than walking into one of the large grocery stores. The way this is written, it would prevent like the convenience stores or the gas stations still from being able to sell alcohol. It would just add the like the larger drugstore type facilities.
Okay. Counsel, if you have comments.
Yeah, the ordinance simply kind of modifies the definition of what is a grocery store to kind of eliminate what was previously a very fine line between your, you know, large drugstore, which sells a lot of grocery-type items, and a grocery store before. So we've simplified definition, I think, in some regards, and have kind of broadened it to allow it to include a larger drugstore, still leaving you with what I think is a clear and reasonable distinction between those uses and convenience stores, Julie said.
Any comments?
A question for counsel on this. How do you differentiate between something like CVS and Casey's? Because Casey's sells a lot of the same stuff. Is it the square foot size?
Square foot size is one key way to distinguish. I don't believe any of our Casey's locations or convenience store locations have 5,000 square feet of floor space. So that's one way in which to distinguish some of the grocery goods which are listed there would likely be sold at a convenience store. So I think the square footage retaining that square footage restriction is a key way to distinguish between the two.
Any other comments? If not, call the roll.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have tonight. Village Clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Chief of Police.
I have nothing to say.
Corporation Counsel.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Fire Emergency.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Director of Public Works.
Several items tonight, Your Honor. First, I have Item A in front of you, Resolution 10-20. This is a resolution authorizing agreement with Service First Lawn Care Incorporated for our annual weed spraying contract.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to give a little summary, if you don't mind, and then I'd be glad answering questions. This contract with Service First predates myself. The original contract was started in '07, so this is the 13th year this year, and this would extend it three years through 2022. The cost would be the same. This contract, as is detailed out in the agreement, is basically to take care of the weeds between, you know, between the back of curb to the back of curb within the right-of-way. So in particular, the back of curb in the sidewalk, if it's combination curb sidewalk, or in between the edge of pavement, between the curb and the road. So that's why it looks nice when we drive down the road. We do take several efforts at that. It's usually two times a year, and it costs $11,000 per application. We also pay them T&amp;M to spray islands and stuff to keep those looking nice. So while it's aesthetic, it's also, I think, good, you know, care for your pavement, too. Sometimes the weeds can damage your pavement, too, long-term, so.
He also sprays the buildings on Detroit Street?
Yeah. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I'd like just comment, I think this is a really good service. Really, really classes up the village compared to just about where else you go, not to see those ugly weeds growing in the cracks along the curb line and, I mean, pavement. It's just, I mean, this is really a nice service to be able to do.
He really tries to do a good job. If we call him and we have an issue somewhere, he usually just takes care of it.
Yeah, Mark is a local Mortonite that owns Service First, so there's some pride in that alone. But also, if we have weeds, the mayor and myself have been known to call him and hey, have to re-hit something, especially this year with all the rain. So that's one time if there's issues, he will go back and hit those. So if you see something that looks odd, we just notify him and he usually takes care of it.
He has been a true team player.
I'd like to echo Trustee Newman's statements. I don't think there's anything we could do better bang for the buck towards aesthetics townwide than the weed spraying. I think it, Trustee Newman said, I think it makes a huge difference, and, you know, if you don't notice it, drive through other communities. I mean, ours is a distinct difference.
I just want to add the same thing. I have a farm property, and I know how bad weeds can be, and it's one of those things, if we didn't have it, you'd know it, but you may not even realize we do it because the weeds don't exist.
Unless you've seen him driving down the road, you may not know what goes on, but once you see him, you'll notice it.
Okay. Let's call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, next item in front of you is Item B. I'd like to ask for acceptance of proposal through NJPA and from Altorfer Incorporated for a 2019 Cat 420 F2IT backhoe loader in the amount of $51,412. This includes a trade-in of the 2013 Cat 420 FIT backhoe, and this also includes a five-year,[540.32][540.32]$2,500 guaranteed buyback for $64,500.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
So a brief summary, we have four backhoes in our fleet that are used between gas, water, and street department predominantly. We have historically used a guaranteed five-year buyback so that we rotate them every five years. I think it's a pretty good program. If I could say, it was a lot better program when Mr. Overhelmann was here from Peoria, but I still think it's a good price, and it would probably be around $50,000 for the next five years. And talking to the salesman, looking at that buyback, that's about what we would pay. So it's about $10,000 a year for us to operate those backhoes, which is pretty much what you see us 75% of the time out on the streets doing.
Call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is Item C. I'd like to waive formal bidding and acceptance of proposal from Sam Layman Chrysler Jeep Dodge Morton for a 2019 Dodge Ram 1500 Quad Cab Four-Wheel Drive for the Water Treatment Department in the amount of $26,275.81.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments?
I would like to add the way formal bidding. I always like to explain that. We solicited, like we did the last time, proposals from the Morton dealerships. I think that's a big thing, but, you know, if that's something we want to discuss going forward, they all offer, you know, Ford, GMC, Chevy, Dodge, and it saves a lot of time for both them and us if we're willing to go local, especially for what they provide within the town. In this case, the next lowest bid was $119.19 more than the Dodge, so a couple of them are neck and neck on this, so I think that justifies the good price that we have here. And it's still $200 than the truck we bought several months ago. So just wanted to add that with the way formal bidding. We can obviously go back and bid things if we need to.
With ties to the dealership, I'll choose to abstain.
I have a question about this. You utilize NJPA for the bidding process that's been satisfied, and it's worked well for you. This seemed to go pretty fast. How much time do you, how much administrative time do you put into bidding when you actually go all out to bid? How much do you spend to get the best price if you don't utilize these avenues?
Yeah, obviously bidding takes time, takes time out of the mechanic, the street department. We're willing to do that. I struggled with how we originally did the backhoes. That's why we're going through NJPA. I'm obviously willing. We bought a John Deere, we bought a Cat, willing to go through that, but trying to line up the specs you want and that for those piece of equipment can be tough, willing to do it. I don't know if I have a specific answer as far as ours, but I know Ryan Noth, the chief mechanic, is always elated if we can go to the four dealers and solicit proposals, and I know they really appreciate that opportunity to have a quick turnaround with that. So it usually saves a lot of time, too, with the process, so.
I agree with you. It's the best route to go. I just wondered if there was anything you wanted to add to it.
Yeah, and the co-op programs, and I've worked with you on that, especially NJPA. We have another one on here coming up, the HGAC Buy, which we purchased on that before. You know, it's allowed us to, you know, get out of that bidding process in the hopes that we don't get something we don't want, but that actually guarantees that price, and I think a lot of communities use that now. So we appreciate the opportunity to get the best equipment for us, and we spend a lot of time, I know on the next item, Todd and Kevin are here, we spend a lot of time going through stuff, so we like that opportunity to use that and get what we want, but we're always willing to bid it if that's what you guys would like us to do. We try to be careful, obviously with local, we're cautious of that, that we're not trying to exclude somebody there, but even some of our tandem trucks, we've bought Kenworth before, we've bought, we've learned, you know, our mechanic, street department, the guys running them, what works best for us, and we want to keep those trucks as long as we possibly can. So we've appreciated that support and confidence in us to get the right equipment for the right price.
Call the roll.
Blunier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman is abstaining. Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So that ties right into Item D here, acceptance of proposal through HGAC Buy and from EJ Equipment for a 2019 E450 truck and Q's CCTV and lamp or lateral launch components for the wastewater department in the amount of $296,000 and zero cents. This does not include the trade of the existing 2010 E450 truck and EnviroSite camera.
Move to approve.
Second.
So with that, I sent an email to some of you, too, if you had any questions on this. This is the perfect case of what you just asked, and Todd and Kevin, I always offer, if these guys want to show up, frankly, I'm really listening to them. I have obviously some input, but these are the guys that are going to use it every day. This is a huge piece of equipment for us, our previous camera, and the reason why we're not trading it now is we'd like to overlap the new one and get it running, and then go forward and try to sell that, hopefully to another community or whatever. It's basically a retrofitted panel van, doesn't have any safety features, I don't believe it has water on it. It's not very ergonomic, it just wasn't set up. It worked, it did what it needed to do for the last nine, 10 years, but we're ready to step into doing some additional items, which would be lateral launching, and what that is, is being able to send the camera up the sewer main and then launch out a camera up the laterals. We're currently spending about $15,000 a year to locate and televise those sanitary laterals. That's something I'd say over the next 10 to 20 years is going to be a real focus on us, for us, when it comes to infiltration, I and I, and really trying to assess those laterals and what we're going to do. Done a great job in the last several decades on sewer mains, but this is our next step going forward. It's been really, really great when we spend that $15,000 to some of the private contractors, basically to locate where that lateral's at and to look at the condition of it during that time. Previously, I'd say before the last five years, we weren't doing that, so it was kind of a, what are we going to find when we dig into this? So I think it's been a very successful, so. So I don't know if you guys wanted to add anything. We've looked at several different manufacturers. I've been in the different trucks with them, demoing them. At the end of the day, Q's is the market leader, I believe.
Yes.
It's not the cheapest, but we feel this piece of equipment will last a long time, very ergonomic. I know it's the one these guys want, too, so.
Service is a big deal to us, especially when you're dealing with an application like this, it's a matter of when, not if, it's going to break down. So I did stress that to all the companies involved, that, you know, service was going to be the number one factor, and after talking to EJ Equipment, we feel very comfortable in going down this road with them, so.
We have a relationship with EJ Equipment, so that's big. A lot of our tandem trucks, our sweeper is with EJ, and excellent service through them. The EnviroSite really didn't turn out to be what we wanted it, so with that, we'd be ready, you know, ready to answer any questions that you guys have.
Well, what we got is pretty basic. I've been in it, there's not much there.
Yeah. Service is perfect for what we had to do. So like Craig mentioned, we're just ready to hit that next step, especially our capital projects. Now, we can go out and provide those services for our own self and not, you know, be scrambling for time trying to line up different companies to do it, also not.
And you can do it when you want to do it.
Exactly.
I think, you know, as far as talking about the infiltration, the laterals, you know, we've talked about that before, about, you know, how much that taxes our system, you know, our system as a whole, you know, the rainwater going in there that doesn't need, shouldn't need to be treated going in there, and I'm looking forward to this, being able to, you know, instead of maybe just doing it a little bit like we did before, doing a lot more, and really, like you said, taking that next step and starting to look at the laterals and starting to fix some of that and take some of the load off of our system by doing so.
Good discussion. Any other comments?
I guess more of a question, like in a piece of equipment like this, I mean, obviously it's a, you know, higher dollar item. How does like bidding, I mean, work? Is there different agencies you're working with, or different companies? Are there, is there outfitters that are also available? I mean, I guess, I guess I'm kind of naive, I guess, to a larger piece of equipment.
This would tie into what you just asked. I think this would be a really tough one for us to bid. Like I said, we could always come back with the different proposals from the different manufacturers through the cooperative programs, too, and we could do that, and we're willing to do that. I'm not saying we're not willing to use NAREES or something, but I would think that would be our process, is to bring back different proposals, and maybe it's not the lowest, but we could review those.
I guess the question.
It's a little difficult with, when it gets to those bigger items, in my opinion.
Like Q's, since they make the camera, they also make the truck. NAREES is a different company, they also make their own truck. The last camera we bought, we just bought the camera and put it in a new van that they have.
The van that we went and purchased locally.
So, and we got that van a year before I started. My understanding is that van they have now is a dramatic change from the van you had before. Yes. So when they took the upgrade last time, they made a huge leap, but when you go with Q's or NAREES, they have a generator, they put AC in it, have everything laid out the way it's supposed to be, and our truck, we've switched around two or three times just from learning.
And I think these cooperatives are, I mean, that's where a lot of people are going, that's why they're all over the place, NJPA, HGAC Buy, to try to get around that bidding process, which is an exhaustive process, and sometimes, you know, communities don't really get the product they wanted. So that helps at least guarantee that price. There's a group reviewing those prices to make sure it's an appropriate price.
Yeah, that's essentially, I guess, is finding, at least making sure that they're, it's competitive in its own industry, you know, if it's.
To his point, when you look at one of these cooperatives, you're looking for that particular product, all of them have to be specked out identically, but they're going to be a different level of quality and different levels of price, and so they have to look at the overall value of what they're purchasing. What's the purchase price? What's it going to take to maintain it? What's residual value, et cetera, and how much time is it going to save you in the field? And I think that's what you guys factored into this, and what you found out was, this is the best value, even though it's not the least cost, so, if that makes sense.
And that company, where are they out of?
Orlando.
Orlando.
And that is another, the actual, one of the, he's higher up in the company for Q's down in Orlando, he flew in, and he was part of the demo crew that Craig was involved with and Kevin, but he stressed that normally Q's is tight-knit with their product. They don't have, like, companies like EJ Equipment sell for them, it's direct, but he has utmost confidence in Craig with EJ Equipment to sell their products, so that was, that really, you know, helped sell it to us.
And I guess lastly, I guess, do we have at least some source of like referral, I guess, or some other communities that have?
Yeah, that's a good question. We didn't solicit referrals, we could.
He volunteered to us. He said, anytime you want a referral, we've got pages.
We dug into who had the Q's, which was important. One of the local contractors, he's got, that we've used, has nine Q's.
Either nine.
I think he used to have NAREES, so I'm not trying to pick on NAREES. NAREES is great for some communities, but yeah, we tried to do some homework on, you know, St. Louis, I know, uses quite a few Q's, City of St. Louis, stuff like that, so. But we could get referrals if we needed to on that.
Never heard.
I think most, most people that are going with the lower ones, though, is cost, I think, I would guess in this case.
But we were out with, Eric was doing some work for us a couple months back, and so they had their unit out, and we got to talk to them one-on-one about the product.
That's fair.
Any other comments?
Your Honor, could I ask just one question? It's on the right side of the page. It's the LM 936 lamp system.
Yes.
That's, you know, a third of the cost of the truck. What is that?
That is the lateral inspection system. So it basically, it's a whole new unit, you can drive it down the main line, but like Craig said, you can launch it up the lateral and go up 150 feet, which is generally enough to get through the house.
Okay, thanks.
And we tried, we demoed them out, obviously, we went up to the house, so we demoed it on some people we knew, just to be safe.
When it said lamps, I was wondering if we could just replace a few LM's.
Correct.
Yeah. It's a, it's a pretty neat, I mean, we're excited about it. I mean, this is, this is the next step. I mean, we've done a great job, as I said, for the past several decades on the mains. We're good, our mains are in great condition. It's time to start focusing on the laterals and seeing where they're at. And we've experienced some, the way our ordinance reads it, if there's a structural damage, and this may be something we want to review long-term, too, in the right-of-way, if there's structural damage at the T or whatever, that's our responsibility, but if it's roots or something else, that's on, you know, the business owner, homeowner. We've, we've had several of them that were significant cost.
We averaged about three.
So that will help us stay ahead a little bit, we'll send out and check even some of the other areas and see what those conditions are of those similar laterals in similar timeframe.
But, I mean, our hope is to help the homeowners as well, so when we're going to do our inspections, if we come across a house that has issues, we can address it then, you know, make them aware of, so we're not getting called in the middle of the night because somebody's basement is backing up, that problem's already been resolved.
So do you do laterals just as needed now, and do you see yourselves doing laterals more regularly, or are you going to spend a lot more time doing laterals because you can? We're going to do more laterals now and assess that.
Right now, we just do ahead of the major capital projects, just to get them located. But in the future, I can see us, when we drop our camera on the main line, until we get every home mapped and mortened, we'll be doing that.
So for instance, a lot of our capital projects, historically, we'd base it on the condition of the main, where you redo the main, where you redo that sanitary lateral to the right-of-way with a new clean-out, and we're still doing that today, but now we're getting to that 20 years later, 20-plus years later, where, you know, that sewer's been lined or even new in some cases, and we're having to go overlay or do something. At that time, we'd go look at those. We may start getting into, you know, where we've lined the main, but we haven't lined the laterals. I'm not saying we're going to line the laterals, but that may be something that we need to assess and bring back to all of you to determine a program we want to deal with going forward if we do have, you know, some, you know, laterals on streets that need some attention that aren't going to last the next, you know, 20 or 20 to 50 years, so. We're not really sure where we're going to go from here, we just know it's an area we need to hit. And I think a lot of communities are still 20 years back, starting to TV their mains, so we're.
But again, as Trustee Parrott said, we could be saving treatment of water.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's our goal, long-term.
Yes, in the industry, 80% of your infiltration comes from the sanitary laterals. So for about a 20-year span, we were lining approximately 7,000 linear feet of sewer main every year. Well, we've caught up to that, or we feel comfortable with what we have in the system. So now, as Craig mentioned, we're starting to look into, all right, is this the next step?
We still haven't addressed between the house and the right-of-way, though.
I know, but as a homeowner.
And I can tell you.
As a homeowner, I'd want to know I had a problem before I had it for basement.
Yeah, and we don't have an answer for this yet. I mean, some communities do. Obviously, we can't afford to go align everybody's lateral all the way up to their house, but, you know, maybe that's a program we want to look at in the future and participation or something to do that. I can tell you from experience, we've done new projects, we water flood our trenches. Man, it's scary sometimes. You can hear, you know, I mean, it finds the path of least resistance, and you can hear it in the sewer main, you know? We had one on Washington, it sounded like a waterfall, you know? But, I mean, I can't go up between the house and the right-of-way to go find where that problem is, so we know we have those problems out there.
But we've always been proactive, this is just.
Yeah.
Future proactiveness where we need to be at.
But I mean, I can't go up between the house and the right-of-way to go find where that problem is. So we know we have those problems out there.
But we've always been proactive. This is just future proactiveness where we need to be at.
And we'll be able to locate, we'll be able to locate the sanitary private lateral too. I know I mentioned that briefly, but in cases too, or even, we'll probably televise at the same time, but there's cases where we just need to find where it's at. This will be able to allow us to do that, to locate it on the surface and we'll be able to elevation. And that's where we found success the last five years on our capitals. When I started, and I think you remember Jeff, you know, we had a payout and it was called Locate Existing Lateral. We're out on Ravine. When I went out there, it was like, I mean, it was like a bomb went off. There were mounds of dirt everywhere and they couldn't find these laterals. It was an old, you know, county subdivision with old septic and there's just all kinds of stuff going on. Now we go out there, I would say, I mean, we're 99% plus success rate. When we go out there, our surveyor locates where the lateral is, the contractor digs up and he can find it within inches where that's at. So you can see it actually on Paris today, they, they're now, they know where everything's at. They're now saw cutting the pavement instead of digging out everything. They're saw cutting the pavement and where the laterals are and leaving the pavement in, just with rain and everything else, because we know where everything's at. So we mark them and they just dig up what they need, which has really saved us.
But you're exactly right. Now that you've probably, that ravine was a nightmare. We were placing curbs and trying to find that. It looked like a war zone.
And then you couldn't find it. So it was like, keep digging. And we're digging 10, 15 foot deep. It just didn't work. So that's where that 15,000 that we're spending, we're digging and finding them within, you know, inches.
There's a net, I remember it, it ended up being like 5,000 per house, just exploratory digging. So you can see the state of things.
So now we tell the contractor where it's at. If it's not there, then we'll engage and figure out what to do next.
And then you have Martin, right? Yeah, it's all settled.
Yeah.
And curbs we ended up replacing, new curbs and didn't do enough curb. Yeah, let's not go there again. I had to make the contractor tear out about 30 foot of curb because he's notched it with the teeth of his bobcat. Young inspector learned right then and there, we don't accept that kind of curb. In Morton anyhow, so we were decent, fair, but we got new curb out of it. So, all right, any other comments? Call the roll.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. Next item is item E, ordinance dash 20 dash 05. This is an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property.
I'll move. Second.
You want to explain this a little bit, what we're doing there?
Yes. I had worked with council here on how we sell personal property. Actually, it relates to a couple of items we have tonight, the truck. We've come across through some of our meetings with other communities, Peak and Peoria. In particular, they use a site called govdeals.com, which I've signed up for. They say, others say you can, you can get 20% more using this site, similar to a Craigslist, but for municipals. So that's what I would like to use to sell at least these on here and see how it goes. So this would be giving myself the authority to sell this equipment. We would probably have more going forward if we're successful. A lot of times we hang on to stuff so long because it's hard to, you know, hard to sell and be fair and, you know, whether you auction or whatever. So Pat, if you could add to, this, this was a route Pat suggested to go and.
And the ordinance functionally declares a property surplus and authorizes Craig to make arrangements to sell it, best him with discretion, the best way to do it. And it's something that's scalable and repeatable for future similar property. We can redo it at any time with new list, new property. So I think we've defined a path that hopefully will be more convenient for Craig and staff to sell when they have stuff they don't need.
So the items that are on there right now is a 2008 New Holland tractor. This is the one we used to, it's, it's got high hours on it, but it's what we used to water downtown. It's been sitting for a while. So we don't really have a use for that. The 2005 Ford F-150 regular cab, that's the one that's replacing the one we're purchasing tonight. I just figured we could get a little more money using GovDeals as opposed to trading in. The 2004 Balzer sludge wagon, this is the result of us not being able to land apply sludge. We're going to hang on to the mixer, but the wagon's just sitting outside now, rusting away. So I think it's, it's worth what it's worth now. Now, I, we do have a local farmer interested in that, and I don't know, Pat, if you wanted to explain, I believe I can still sell to the local farmer too.
That's correct. You have the ability to sell it. And a private sale list doesn't obligate you to sell on govdeals.com.
Yeah. And then the last one, obviously, I let all my super tenants know, so Scott Stedman was excited. He had some old gas meters that sometimes he doesn't know what to do with that could come of use to somebody. I know this site that we intend to use, they sell everything from a pile of dirt to helicopter. So they'll, you can sell anything on there. So, and I think it's a pretty easy transaction, money-wise and everything, so.
We don't need a helicopter.
No, but I'm just saying, we can sell anything and it'll sell.
And if we trade the tractor for a helicopter.
Yeah. But they have sold piles of dirt on there before too, and they will sell, they've told me, so. And you guys are welcome to go to that site and check it out and give me your thoughts too. But we'll kind of train with these first four. They'll work with us on them and be glad to give feedback.
I think it's, I think it's a great way to be able to find a market for some of this stuff. And, you know, like the gas meter, like who else are you going to sell 16 gas meters to, other than, you know, another municipality?
Yeah.
And I think it's a good marketplace for that, to allow us to get some of the value back out of that.
And you don't have to be a municipality or a government entity to buy anything.
Right.
You can go on there. They have like 30 iPads, you know, that a university is selling, or they have restaurant equipment that the university took out of a dorm kitchen, or it's just amazing what they have on there.
One of the things that you said is, is that other municipalities said that they thought they could get up to 20% more. It's an easy statement to say. I guess what I'd like to know is, is in the future, if you thought this was successful, is when you give us a list like this, to also give us what you thought you could sell it for?
Yep.
And then see if you can beat it on GovDeals.
Yes. And, and I figured a few of you might ask me that. We were, we've talked about it. Unfortunately, I gave a couple of tough items.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying if you, if you guessed wrong and that there's something wrong. It's just, for our knowledge, is it worthwhile, you know, to unload a whole lot of other things you might want to get rid of?
Yeah, and I'd be glad even right now, I mean, the New Holland tractor is probably, I mean, 7,500, the Ford's probably 2,000. I mean, it's done. It's.
No, it's in good condition, just needs another.
Yes, hopefully the people buying, I mean, we'll be honest on there. The sludge wagon, $10,000.
It's two-tone colored.
Yeah.
Red and rust.
But $10,000 for the sludge wagon, honestly, the gas meters, I don't know. I think we're just trying to unload them to somebody that can use them and will feel good about that, so. But yeah, good point. Now we'll gladly come back.
And it helps clean out the shop. You have a way to get rid of it.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Lastly is item F. This is resolution 11 dash 20. This is a resolution authorizing donation agreement with Ameren Illinois Company, doing businesses in Ameren, Illinois.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Would you like to explain this, Craig?
I, I, I put some pictures on your, on your desk. This is at 420 East Washington. We've been in discussion for several years with Ameren. They typically don't donate property. This is just a corner that I think we'd all like to look nice over time and have a little control over. There's probably not a whole lot we can do with it. This was due to the fact that they relocated the 69 KV transmission line that used to go behind Brentwood. It follows the east side of this property and heads down forth on the new line now. So they're willing to donate this to us. It's a three-quarter acre site that has the old scale house building, which is approximately 1,300 square feet. After this agreement and after the title changes hands or that agreement, Pat could explain that, the, they still want some easements along the property for access and ownership of that.
And we'll be coming back to you, your first meeting in July for approval of those. I have reviewed them and they're, they're customary Ameren easements.
So this is for the whole lot?
This is for the whole lot and the building. We had talked about demoing the building down the road. I think right now, we've tried to utilize it for storage, possibly a field office or something.
Craig's being very humble. When Ameren needed a way to hook up the lines and that, we offered up this piece of property. They said, well, we don't own them. I said, well, then you can donate to the village. We'll take care of it. He's being very humble tonight, so.
And there's more work to do with Ameren, their old building down there. They're basically abandoning that line that goes back of the old affiliated property is what I call it. So they've been really easy to work with. They typically don't donate property, but this is one they won't have to maintain the grass. So there is some money in with us to maintain and kind of clean up the site from its, I guess, gravel state. We'd probably do that in-house, clean it up, so.
How long has Ameren owned this?
Not very long. It was actually sold to another local and they turned around and made some money on it in another sale. So Ameren was just late, late to the game. We had discussed it prior, but.
So you're familiar with the property, but there's a scale there. It would be significant to raise this property.
Yeah, and I've already removed the scale as a part of when we reconstructed Washington Street. So we worked with Mr. Meyer, who owned it even previously, and removed that scale to be able to get sidewalk through there. So I'm pretty familiar with down there. If we demoed it, obviously, it's, it's built really nice. It would probably be like our demo ordinance, two foot below grade and fill it in. I have talked to Billy Daniels just to get some rough prices on what that would cost, but I think it would be fairly reasonable to take it down.
I'm just not, I mean, when I was a little boy, I was a grain elevator and.
Oh, yeah.
That used to go to all the time. I was just concerned what's underneath that.
Yeah.
So.
And it was more work to take the scale out than probably to take the building down, like you said.
But we took the scale out because they had added parking that backed out into the road. So if they agreed to get rid of the parking, allow us to put the sidewalk in, we agreed to take the scale out. So the citizens walk, one with the walkability. And again, this will clean up that corner where it's been sightly for years. Morton will own it. We'll dictate what goes on there. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Roger, thanks for all your work on that comprehensive. Would you want to explain this in short, what the each of?
Sure. In terms of the comprehensive plan, we really had good cooperation from the other agencies. I mean, they all pitched in and did their thing, so. A number of years ago, Steve Newhouse, who was on the plan commission for, I'm not sure how many years, a long time, prior to going on the village boards, he had a lot of experience in the plan commission. And then when he was the trustee, he was the liaison to the, to my area. And he put together a, a guide, kind of explains the process of what the plan commission does. Steve, you would remember from your days of doing that same job. And Jeff had mentioned earlier that he thought it'd be good that I hand this out for some of you that aren't familiar with what the plan commission does. You know, typically, they're going to, we have to hold a public hearing if we, for example, this solar ordinance that we're going to amend, we will have to hold a public hearing at the plan commission. So that way, neighboring, anybody, anybody that has a concern about it can come and give their input. And then they have, the plan commission then will make a recommendation that is brought to you for a final vote, either yea or nay. Fair assumption, Pat? Whether it be a zoning amendment, a special use, typically, those are the things they Anything, any questions that you have about plan commission?
And I just thought all of you should have it in case assignments change or something comes up, you could check. A lot of work went into it.
Most of the time, Pat will put together a draft of the ordinance. So we're not necessarily just going there with a blank sheet of paper to start, because then that's not very productive. So if you kind of have an idea of where you want to go, you can kind of get it formatted that way and present it to the plan commission. And then they can, if they need to tweak something here or there, they can do that and forward it on to you folks.
All right, thank you. Village trustees, do you have anything? Closed session, we do need to have a closed session for the purpose of discussing the price for sale, release of real estate owned by Village of Morton, P5ILCS 122C6. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We, call the roll, please.
Blounier.
Yes.
Leach.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Mendel.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Roger, thanks for all your work on that comprehensive.
Would you want to explain this in short, what the each of?
Sure. In terms of the comprehensive plan, we really had good cooperation from the other agencies. I mean, they all pitched in and did their thing, so. A number of years ago, Steve Newhouse, who was on the plan commission for, I'm not sure how many years, a long time, prior to going on the village boards, he had a lot of experience in the plan commission. And then when he was the trustee, he was the liaison to the, to my area. And he put together a, a guide, kind of explains the process of what the plan commission does. Steve, you would remember from your days of doing that same job. And Jeff had mentioned earlier that he thought it'd be good that I hand this out for some of you that aren't familiar with what the plan commission does. You know, typically, they're going to, we have to hold a public hearing if we, for example, this solar ordinance that we're going to amend, we will have to hold a public hearing at the plan commission. So that way, neighboring, anybody, anybody that has a concern about it can come and